I'll preface it a bit that we are not going into exec session tonight. We do not have a reason to do so, and therefore, we will not be going into exec session. We only go into exec when we have an explicit reason to do so allowed by the open meetings law. And we have a good sort amount of business to get through, nuts and bolts, basically, for voting items for the long consent agenda that will address various items there. And a few voting items for BOSI's, and we're going to adopt our budget bulletin. We'll get to that, but we'll get to all that, then we'll do our public comment period and receiving from delegations, et cetera, students, and get into our high point of the night, which is hearing from folks at Fall Creek about learning forward. And so we'll, we're going to get through the consent agenda and various other voting items, and then move on. But we do need to modify the agenda. And Sean and I have been discussing this this afternoon. But, but I'll take a motion from anyone at this point to modify the agenda.
Bless you, Eldred. For folks who heard, again, we only go into executive session when there's an explicit reason. So I propose a modification to the agenda, which is to remove item 2.1 and 2.2, which is to move the receiving and hearing of delegates to section nine. My apologies, you all, for the driveway alarm. And to move the superintendent report announcements before the school district business to the receiving of hearing of delegates, and move item 11.13, Learning Forward ICSD and Other Business, to 11.1 Other Business. All board members have received an updated version of this proposed change, and I'm hoping that we can post somewhere, and maybe I can post it in the chat for other folks to understand the change that we're trying to make as well.
I'll second.
It's Chris. So questions? Are we set on? You do have the agenda in front of you, and it should flow. But we're going to get some work done for a period of time, and then do some more work. So if there are no questions, Tricia, go ahead, and we'll call the roll.
Rob Ainsley?
Yes.
Erin Crowell?
Yes.
Sean Eversley-Bradwell?
Yes.
Eldred Harris?
Yes.
Nicola Fave? Moira Lang?
Yes.
Sorry, yes.
Chris Malcolm?
Yes.
Anne Reichlin?
Yes.
Patricia Wasland?
Yes.
Very good. Thanks, everyone. We'll go right into the consent agenda. And Chris Malcolm, there is so much here, I brought my glasses, so to get through all this. And there are a few items on the consent agenda that were fast-tracked to finance and facilities last week, and I'll have Amanda speak to those once we get to them. But why don't we move, if we move in second the consent agenda, then we can talk about any questions anyone might have.
I'll move the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Thank you, Chris. Thank you, Moira. So, Chris, you want to speak to page after page of consent agenda?
There is a ton of information on the consent agenda. I'll give a quick overview, you know, if you look at 6.1 through 6.4, a lot of resolutions for generic cooperative purchasing with BOSI's, which we do every year, and basically, as a group, as a partner with BOSI's, most of those are with the Delaware Shenango, Madison, Atsigo, BOSI's for purchases for food and cooperative purchasing, cafeteria supplies. And then if you go down to 6.6, we've got the resolution for light fiber for high-speed communication services. Not to keep on moving down. Then we have agreement with campus construction for their management services of Phase Two of operations, of, sorry, of construction operations. We've got a ton there, not to exclude inter-personal, inter-transfer of funds. And if you go down to the bottom, the two that I really want to point out is the air control for LACS, and also for the Arts Room, and then the Beverly J. Martin elevator modernization. There is a ton of information there. Amanda, if you, I know I really went over those quickly. There's also the resolution to designate the disposal of surplus property. And what else that I think that's really discussion-worthy? IPI grants. But it's a, a lot of things that are, you know, that we do this time of year as far as solidifying different purchasing agreements, also transferring of funds between different accounts. Nothing extremely out of the ordinary until you look at the different construction projects.
Hey, Chris, can you be able to speak to what it means when we say designate and dispose of surplus property?
Yes, and you'll see, we've, we've been doing this throughout the year. But when we have excess property, we either can try to sell it, which we did. If the last meeting, actually, we were able to put it on Facebook Marketplace and sell it in order to recoup some funds. If it doesn't have any value, we dispose of it. A lot of times, it's old technology that is obsolete. It's wiped clean, and we have to dispose of it. Sometimes it's office furniture. So this, we've been doing this throughout the year, as you can expect, especially with technology, it gets outdated pretty quickly. I believe there were trucks involved in this, and I'm just trying to open it up.
Chris, not to speak out of turn, but the most recent disposal of funds were a couple of vans.
Vans.
A pickup truck with a lift, and a box truck as well, all of which were publicly able to bid, and if I'm not mistaken, received higher bids than what the anticipation was for each of those. This one, Nicole clearly states, is simply a drive on a lift for the transportation department. That's the only we're doing. But as Chris indicated, usually it's technology. Sometimes it's desks and chairs. Chris, I'm probably missing things as well, right?
It's any type of equipment that we have that we no longer have use for. This just happened to be that type of equipment, especially, we don't often get the items like the lift from transportation.
Thanks, Chris. And Amanda, there are from some outliers here that you did want to, want us to address, were HVAC and two rooms at LACS was fast-tracked through facilities and finance. Plus, we've been in facilities, we've been talking about the elevator and Beverly J. Martin for quite a while. If you could just give us an update and what we're going to vote on.
Absolutely. So you really don't need me. Chris just took it away. And so I will just, just from the perspective of, you know, the business office, the number of capital project-related items on this consideration of accounts really is so that we can get this work in process as soon as possible. Number one, especially with the HVAC at LACS, this will give us a few more spaces to welcome young people back to the building. That will, this will be, you know, occurring in the next couple of weeks. So we want to have that prepared and ready to go. The elevator, this work will be done over the summer, because you could imagine it's pretty loud and disruptive. We've had some issues with the elevator functionality in the sense of, you know, the board and the wiring. So it's not so much the, the actual box, the elevator box itself, but, but the, the equipment around it. And so this modernization, this will be, this is a state contract situation, right? Where we put that out, there's a number of companies that are on state contract that are already approved. This is the one that came in with the lowest sort of bid, and that's where we're going there. So then that way, this work can get done this summer. For those of you that don't know, the elevator, it works most of the time, which is not enough. And so that's why this is really one of those situations where we're going to put this under the capital project work that's already been occurring at Beverly J. Martin, and we'll just, like, pull this in as sort of a change order, right? So that it falls under the current capital project work that we have. And also, just so you know, and I don't think it came to the board agenda in any way or consideration of accounts, but to ensure that adults and young people had access to all three floors in Beverly J. Martin through the Special Education Department funds, we purchased these very state-of-the-art wheelchairs that actually can go up and also go downstairs. It's motorized, and so you actually rather easily can be able to transport young people and adults upward and downward. So everyone still has access to the building. Plus, BJM has just done an exceptional job of rethinking environment and bringing support services, portable libraries, to young people as needed, right? And using classroom space on the, on the bottom floor as well. So those are just a couple of things. Rob, one other point, you're going to see, it looks as if there is a redundancy in terms of the agreement for construction management services, and Chris spoke to that with Campus Construction. That is our current construction management firm that, that manages the scheduling, the, you know, supports the design development, the construction development, and then the construction itself. There are two separate contracts there, and that is on purpose. One is for the entirety of Phase Two, and the other one is, remember, we pulled out the middle school HVAC work at both Boynton and DeWitt. And so that is a very unique, separate project from the Phase Two, and that aligns with what we're submitting to State Ed. So that's why you're going to see those two different contracts for the same contractor. But that's, that's why that's pieced out. But otherwise, Chris, thank you. You made my job really easily.
That's Chris's goal, I'm sure.
It's fabulous.
As we, as all of us, we want to make your job as easy as possible. And certainly, the middle school HVAC project was certainly more than a pull-out. It was an add-on. It was
Correct.
Really just conditions on the ground dictated that we really dig into a solution for the middle schools.
That's, that's right, Rob.
Part of the process.
That's right. And it really, that project specifically, remember, we tackled a lot of the air filtration and circulation issues to reopen our schools. This one tackles the comfort issues as well, and humidity control and things like that, right? So this expands what we've already done to create a permanent fix for a lot of the comfort issues we've been seeing.
We certainly anticipate and hope that it does address all those issues. And we'll find out, and that we look forward to that. Any other questions regarding the consents, anything?
Rob, I have a question and two comments. One, I want to remind our voting public that the consent agenda normally does not include 20-plus items. But as Chris said, that we find ourselves at that time of year preparing and planning for next year. Anytime that we have a bid for services, our bids are dictated by New York State education law. And so I want folks to make sure they understand that as well. It also seems like a good time to remind folks that all school meals are free for any student, regardless of eligibility, in ICSD this year. So if you take a look and look at our Food Service Program Statement of Income and Expense Report, that is reflected there. And Chris, as the Chair of the Finance Committee, and I had a brief conversation about this in discussing our contract with OC and BOSI's and for technology services, which we've been doing for the past couple of years. And this is both to the Finance Committee, who I did not, was not able to attend, and to Dr. Brown and Amanda, that we've had a number of folks asking questions about the work that we do to support students with devices. And is this particular contract related to that? Or there, do we have an opportunity to have a conversation about the contractual services we have to make sure we are thinking about technology and services for next year?
Thanks, Sean. Anything else before we vote? It is a long list. Appreciate the time and opportunity to go through. You good, Dr. Brown? Tricia, if you could call the roll, that'd be great.
Rob Ainsley?
Yes.
Erin Crowell?
Yes.
Sean Eversley-Bradwell?
Yes, and looking forward to the discussion.
Eldred Harris?
Yes, thanks for the clarification.
Nicola Fave?
Yes.
Moira Lang?
Yes.
Chris Malcolm?
Yes.
Anne Reichlin?
Yes.
Patricia Wasland?
Yes.
Very good. Thanks, everyone. And we'll move on to some other annual business that we do have to get to, and moving on to school district business, and a resolution to accept the TST BOSI's administrative budget. And this is the administrative budget that Jeff and the folks at BOSI's came and presented to the Finance Committee, I believe, that did not present to the full board. But indeed, on an annual basis, we, as one of the component districts, we do vote on their administrative budget, not the total budget for BOSI's, because that's dependent on a variety of items that we don't have a say in or not our business. But for the administrative budget, yes, we, we have to approve that. And then we'll also follow up with approval of the new, new folks being voted onto the BOSI's board.
I'll move the resolution to approve the TST BOSI's administrative budget.
Second.
Second by Pat. And you can see, there's a variety of wheres is in to be resolved, and it's there for everyone to see. But I don't think that will be a part of the public record. Any questions regarding the BOSI's budget administrative?
Rob, for those of us who are unable to attend the Finance Committee, any thing in particular stands out, federal funding, state funding, anything we should know?
Chris, Amanda, anyone?
So we approved this, we're in April now, so back in February, and there was some standard increases. I was actually shocked at how the, some of the expenses were kept down, especially due to COVID. But the factor, nothing that stands out. The biggest thing to me is, you know, we're such a large portion of BOSI's that we are impacted more than other, other school districts that participate. So that's one thing that we need to keep in mind.
And Sean, certainly, the standout information that I received from that meeting was when I asked, you know, how many, what percentage of students are, you know, on campus compared to remote? And basically, with the programming they have and the space, they are essentially, all students are on campus, and they really do not do a hybrid learning model. And certainly, it's to do a remote model with a variety of their programs doesn't work. But they've really made a tremendous effort to make it work for in-person, five days a week. And so they're, they've done an outstanding job this past year, and continuing into 20, spring of 21 here. So that was the outstanding info that I received from that, that meeting. Aside from numbers, right?
Amanda, anything to add?
No, I think, I think you covered everything, and, you know, just, just for folks that are going to be looking at the budget document, this number that the Board of Education is voting on is part of the total BOSI's budget, as Rob discussed. So you will see a BOSI's cost of services that includes this amount, but it is, you know, upwards of $16 or $17 million, right? So because this does not include the costs of the programs and the services to young people.
Thank you, man. Correct. Anything else? It was moved, was it, it was moved, right, seconded by Pat, right?
Yes.
Yeah, there you go. My mind is sort of working. So, so if there's no other questions, we'll go ahead. Tricia with the, with the roll call.
Rob Ainsley?
Yes.
Erin Crowell?
Yes.
Sean Eversley-Bradwell?
Yes.
Eldred Harris?
Yes.
Nicola Fave?
Yes.
Moira Lang?
Yes.
Chris Malcolm?
Yes.
Anne Reichlin?
Yes.
Patricia Wasland?
Yes.
Thanks, Pat. Thanks, everyone. And moving on to TST BOSI's election of members to the Board of Cooperative Educational Services. So this is electing three, three folks from, one from Rotten and Lansing and Newfield. It's not competitive, but they, obviously, they, we do need to vote for these folks that are stepping up to serve. And typically, we support them and glad to, glad that someone stepped up, Anne, right? You know, it's, actually, BOSI's is a very interesting organization. And typically, folks don't always have to be a school board member, but sometimes they are, sometimes you're not. But if we could have a motion, that would be great.
I'll move the TST BOSI's election of members to the Board of Cooperative Educational Services.
Second.
Second by Pat. Any other questions? We're good?
I apologize, Rob. I'm, I'm, I need to be in person. I'm talking too much. Just to let folks know in the community that the TST BOSI's has nine component districts, and what we're voting on is that each individual district gets to put forward a candidate. ICSD did not select these candidates, but we are asked to support our component districts and who they put forward to serve on their board. And so that's what we're voting on here.
Thank you, Sean. Appreciate the background and information, as always. So anything else? Are we good? We're glad to help support these folks. Tricia, again, if you please.
Rob Ainsley?
Yes.
Erin Crowell?
Yes.
Sean Eversley-Bradwell?
Yes.
Eldred Harris?
Yes, and we thank them for stepping up.
Nicola Fave?
Yes.
Moira Lang?
Yes.
Chris Malcolm?
Yes.
Anne Reichlin?
Yes.
Patricia Wasland?
Yes.
Thanks, everyone. And now to a resolution that we have to do every year. We did adopt a budget last meeting, last meeting.
Yes.
Yeah, the last meeting, right? So once you do that, Amanda, there's other things you have to do, you know? And public information and notices, and there's a calendar, there's dates that we need to do things. And one of the things we need to do is adopt the 21-22 School District Budget Notice. And if you want to just give a rundown, we, we do have a copy of it in our agenda, but
That's right.
Let folks know what are we going to vote on now.
Sure. So this is just, this is essentially adopting this budget notice. So this is another requirement by New York State Education Department, right? In terms of transparency to the community. So the last time we spoke about the budget, you adopted the Property Tax Report Card, which essentially is a transparency report regarding the budget itself, and then all of our fund balance and reserves. If you look at this document, there are similarities to that document. This is in addition to that Property Tax Report Card. The difference here is that it doesn't talk about transparency in terms of fund balance and reserves. It talks about transparency if the budget vote were to fail twice, and we needed to go to a contingency budget. This is the calculation and the transparency report to show what that contingency budget would mean for the school district. And so essentially, the way you get here is there's a formula that the state puts out to us that we populate. You have to freeze your tax levy amount to the prior year. And then you have a calculation that tells you what percentage, based on the numbers you had in the prior year, you're allowed to spend on administrative component of the budget, right? So administration, if you imagine the kids at the center, right? The sort of the leadership components of the district that are a little bit further out of the circle from the closest to the young people, right? The program component is closest to the young people, and then the capital component is the infrastructure. And so you got, you sort of do this formula, you figure out what that percentage is that you're allowed to have for the administrative component. You also determine what would be things that would be contingent expenses, things that are not required to run the district. So things that are like in our bargain agreements, that's required, right? You have to have a certain amount of money to keep the lights on and the doors open and the, you know, the lawns mode. This incorporates all that. But anything that might be a contingent fund that we really can't justify, that would be an absolute necessity, a health and safety matter, right? Those things would have to be backed out. So for example, sort of like, a great example of that is like travel to professional development. That has to all be backed out, and it's very prescribed by the law. So we actually have a spreadsheet that we use, and we populate that. What you're seeing here is that this calculation in and of itself shown on a form that will now go in the mailer to all voter public in Ithaca City School District.
Thanks, Amanda.
Sure.
And we can, we appreciate that. We, we do have to do this once a year, and we're going to do it right now. If, certainly move in second, and then if there's any questions, we can address it.
I move the resolution to adopt the 21-20, 2021-22, 22 Ithaca City School District Budget.
Second.
Second by Eldred. Thanks, Pat, for stopping up. We appreciate that. Any questions regarding that document? Eldred's looking at it as I speak.
All right, yeah, one question. Amanda, can you explain to us and the public, as you always do so well, what all is included in the administrative component? Because if you look at that line right now, it looks like we spend more money on things than people, still by roughly $2 million. But if I understand it correctly, the administrative component is not all about you all at the executive level.
No. So, so the administrative component, essentially, if you were to look at the budget document, right? That expenditure document that we have, that's about six pages long. It really is the first, the first, I don't know, probably, I'd say like six to 10 budget items prior to the facilities budget lines, right? So it's things that are in the board building that, that, so the district clerk, right? Elections costs, attorney's fees, insurances, the mailroom. You know, any sort of executive leadership that's in there. It would be the entire Human Resources Department, including the BOSI's work and all of our payroll and employee benefits and all that. It would be the entire business services, right? So it's really like the business side, the administrative side of the operations.
Thank you.
Any other questions? You good, Moira? All right, with Moira's ready to go. That's all I need. Okay. So Sean, you good back there?
I believe so. I have some other questions, but there'll be time to engage yous at a budget hearing.
Very good. Tricia, I think we can go ahead.
Rob Ainsley?
Yes.
Erin Crowell?
Yes.
Sean Eversley-Bradwell?
Yes.
Eldred Harris?
Yes. Thank everyone for their hard work on this, this year in particular.
Nicola Fave?
Yes.
Moira Lang?
Yes.
Chris Malcolm?
Yes.
Anne Reichlin?
Yes.
Patricia Wasland?
Yes.
Thanks, everyone. And so that's it for really nuts and bolts and all those things we have to do on the business side. Now we can get into some other items. And we are expecting a very nice person from the New York State School Boards Association to be here tonight. Not sure whether they are. I thought perhaps. And so before we go on to the rest of the meeting, I would invite that nice person from New York State School Boards Association to come on up, and something about a Champions for Change presentation, and And.
Good evening. I'm Sandra Rufo, and I'm a member of the Board of Directors of the New York State School Boards Association. I'm also your area director. The last time I visited your board meeting, I had a plan that I was going to visit all 68 of my districts, and I hit two deer, and one of them was on my way home from Ithaca. So I'm hoping that doesn't happen again this evening. Dr. Brown, members of the board, I believe Mr. Chernikoff was going to be here virtually. I'm not sure if he is. Community members and students. First, I'd like to congratulate you for recently being named to the 2021 Best Communities in Music Education, which you've done, I believe, for the last nine years. But I think I do know of districts that do get this award yearly, and they were not able to participate this year because of the pandemic. But obviously, you were still able to do that, so I think you deserve big congratulations for that. I appreciate the opportunity to join you tonight to present you with a special recognition on behalf of the New York State School Boards Association, is President Fred Langstaff and our Executive Director Bob Schneider for your Third Grade Voting Book Initiative. This is the second time that Ithaca City School District is receiving the Champion of Change recognition. Previously, in September of 2019, you were recognized for Aspiring Educators Award Program for Future Educators and Leaders. NISBA knew that there were many projects happening within the 700 public schools that positively impact students. As a result, a couple of years ago, the association initiated the Champions of Change recognition to highlight some of these exceptional programs. The purpose of the recognition is to give a shout out to districts and boards of education like yourselves for cutting-edge endeavors or exceptional accomplishments that promote strong academic support for all students, promote equity, who've been involved in a project, excuse me, that may be future-oriented and who has the potential to impact others now and in the future. When the NISBA Recognition Committee heard of your endeavor, they overwhelmingly felt it was exactly what this recognition was intended for. As part of Ithaca's anti-marginalization curriculum, teachers were challenged to inspire their students to generate enthusiasm and change related to voting. South Hill Elementary third grade teacher, Mr. Jerk Jake Chernikoff, had a difficult time finding third grade level stories about leaders who played crucial roles in ensuring people's rights to vote in our country. So he decided his class would create its own resource. In spite of the pandemic shutdown, the class made the most of their online learning and worked for two months exploring individuals such as the late U.S. Representative John Lewis and other historical figures such as Ida Wells and Ithaca's own Dorothy Cotton. In addition to writing sections for each voting rights activist, students also wrote a section on modern voting disenfranchisement. With the help of New Orleans author Alex McConduit and Brooklyn illustrator Erwin Awaladin, they finished their book, Our Vote Is Our Voice. Through Google Meetings, the class got together to learn about the project and do their work, learning about voting right activists, the importance of civic engagement, and the electric positions people vote for, all while building teamwork, research, and typing skills. This project is a prime example that although learning the past year may have looked different, it has been happening nonetheless. It gives me great pleasure to present you with this NISBA recognition banner and acknowledgement of this outstanding project and applaud all involved in creating the book, Our Vote Is Our Voice.
Should be a photo op, Dr. Brown, right?
I have my camera back there. We'll get it afterwards.
You do? All right, I'll go get it. Thank you.
We, we, thank you, and but we certainly thank you on behalf of the third graders at South Hill. They're the smart ones that were able to do this and a great teacher and, well, frankly, a great elementary school. So, so Dr. Brown, we, we have about 15 minutes till seven o'clock. I am going to call for an opportunity, if I may, to stretch our legs for a few minutes, and then we'll get on with our regular meeting at public comment at seven o'clock and move on.
Yeah, we'll have Jake and some other folks who are connected to this project come around seven o'clock as well.
Yeah, okay, right, so we can, I would suggest that we take a little break. I should point out that our school board business, for some of our school board members, our, this evening started at five o'clock, not six o'clock. Curriculum, well, the long, the long title for a curriculum.
Curriculum and other stuff.
Yeah, okay. Well, curriculum has already been going, so we're going to just take a quick break, and then we'll be sitting back here at seven o'clock and welcome more, more folks into the conversation.
Thanks, Rob. I know, I know.
My class, along with some help, wrote a book called Our Vote Is Our Voice: Stories of Heroic Americans Who Fought For Our Rights. So I guess first, I definitely want to say it's the kids who deserve the credit for this. It was their research, writing, hard work that made this book possible. So the biggest shout out goes to Hendrix, Phoebe, Ellis, Colin, John, Ryan, Matea, Grace, Max, Karina, Nora, Addie, Mayan, Eli, Alex, Henry, Josara, Landon, and Eda. And also, I definitely have to say thank you to our collaborating author, Alex McConduit, who lives in New Orleans, Louisiana, our illustrator, Irwan Awaludin, who came to work with us virtually all the way from Brooklyn, New York, a parent and are all around kind of like design, Superman, Pete Carlson, Jen Ebel and Michelle Tagliavento, who worked with our class as well. The book wouldn't have been possible without a grant from I P I, so thank you to Steve and I P I. And also a big shout out to Jeff Furman, who I think I saw is on here, who kind of initiated the challenge for this book. He, through his organization and his initiative called Rejoice the Vote, he came in the summer of 2019, feels like a very long time ago, and issued a challenge to a bunch of teachers who were working on anti-marginalization curriculum to do some work around activism, voting rights, democracy, civic engagement. And so his initiative, their kind of, part of their tagline was to honor the past, celebrate the present, and challenge the future. And so in line with that, I was kind of inspired by these profiles they had created on people they called voting vanguards. So people from the iconic to the unsung, who had fought for voting rights for themselves and others. Unfortunately, we got a little bit stuck. I was trying to think, how can we do some work around this? Teach these third graders about these important people in history? When it was pretty clear early on that there weren't really any resources at a third grade level around most of these people's stories. So we figured if there weren't resources, we would go ahead and just create our own. So I wrote a grant to I P I. I coordinated with Alex in New Orleans and Juan in New York. And I P I was able to give us some money. They were going to basically use their stipends, their, their payment to buy a plane ticket or a bus ticket and come sleep on my couch for a week and let me cook them dinner in exchange for doing this project. Both of whom, who lucky, I was lucky, they were friends of mine, I could call in a favor. Juan's day job is working for Jay-Z, so you know, got to call him, call him down from the big leagues to help us out. And so that was the plan, and then the spring of 2020 happened, and everyone knows what that means. And so, you know, everyone was home, school was canceled, reinvented, everything in between. And we kind of, I ended up sort of frustrated, confused, but determined and hopeful. And I decided that we would just kind of lead by example with our learning. We doubled down in the midst of this brand new pandemic that we didn't really know what to do anything about. And we had no idea what was going on with school. And so while the landscape of education was kind of falling apart around us, we began our most rigorous academic work of the year. Once I made sure that everyone had their internet situated, I came up with Plan B, C, D, Q, R, S, everything, to make sure everyone was connected, we kind of hit the ground running. And we had basically 100% attendance every single day, which was no small feat. You know, some of that was me haggling siblings through their email or calling kids' cell phones to make sure that they were staying connected and getting what they needed. But they showed up, and they mostly showed up because they were excited, they were engaged in the challenge, and they were, wanted to create something meaningful together. So for anyone who has seen the book, I'll tell you a little more about how you can a little bit later. As you can see from the book, we learned a lot, learned about all sorts of really cool and inspiring people, even local hero Dorothy Cotton, who passed away a few years ago. And as much as that learning kind of speaks for itself on the pages of the book, I think the thing that was most powerful was this project kind of has a greater lens for current issues of social justice. And particularly in the spring, in the wake of the murders of George Floyd, Ahmaud Arbery, Breonna Taylor, the resurgence, doesn't feel like the right word, because it never went away, but protests happening more and more, Black Lives Matter, percolating back towards the top of the news cycle and that voice kind of growing in the greater scheme of media and social justice. It was really amazing to see this project as, as a lens that the kids could look through and that they could understand the world around them, could process racism, injustice. And so, you know, we got a decent amount of media coverage from this thing. It's cool to get these awards. I think the thing that has been most gratifying was comments like one from a parent last spring that said that working on the book was a lens that they could view things through, talk to their kid about what was going on in the world in a way that was relevant, it was connected to what they were learning, it was developmentally appropriate, and kind of grounded in their developing conceptions of history in our society. So this book, even though it was rooted in history, it was also brought kind of into the present when we had a guest visit from Ms. Phoebe Brown, who's a local activist, and, and she works with an organization called Alliance of Families for Justice. So she came and met with the students, and she kind of reminded them that the work was far from over and that millions of people in our country are still disenfranchised. And that was really important, I think, because I've often found that when kids are learning about oppression, civil rights, racism, it's often kind of presented as a closed door on history, something that's kind of frozen in time. You know, Martin marched, Malcolm protested, things are better, we can move on now. And I think that that's a narrative that many history books kind of present, and it's easy to end up with that impression as a kid sometimes. And so it was really amazing to see the way that, particularly with, with Phoebe Brown coming to visit, the students kind of took their learning and her challenge as a way to understand the stories and efforts of their voting vanguards as an inspiration to continue the important work around contemporary issues of justice, equity, anti-racism. They even wrote a section of the book about modern disenfranchisement and the ways that people are deprived of their right to vote systemically and how the fight is kind of far from over. So that's a little synopsis of our project. Thanks for the time. Thank you to the New York State School Boards Association for the recognition. And go check the book out, please. It's at the Tompkins County Public Library. It's in every elementary school library in the district, at least it should be. It's at Buffalo Street Books. It's on Amazon. Don't buy it on Amazon. Amazon's evil. Go to Buffalo Street Books. And check it out. It's pretty awesome. So thanks so much.
Awesome. Thank you, Jay. Thank you, Jay.
Well, okay, now we have to follow that up with, well, I don't, it's public comment period. So do we have anyone that wishes to speak? Tricia, Emily? And if they are online or in the room? Thanks, Moira. I should say, thanks, Moira, deeper voice, but appreciate it.
Is this person present or?
Is this person present or online? Online. Okay. So we have one person, Mr. Neil Guerra. And he is online.
Okay, so, um, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so, hi, I'm Neil Guerra and I'm from the Cuyahoga Heights Elementary School. And I actually moved here from Ohio and back then I used to take high ability classes in both math and ELA. And what surprises me here is that what I covered in my third grade class over in Ohio is what I'm learning now in fifth grade here at chess. And so because of this curriculum difference, I'd like to propose letting sixth graders who want to take Algebra I be able to take it. So why am I qualified to talk about this? Because I've competed as an elementary schooler at the Math Counts Chapter Competition with the Duitt Middle School Team last year. And with the score that I got, I could have been at the state competition. And what would help me and other students on this national level team is having Algebra One knowledge, which is something that should be offered to all middle schoolers who wanted, not just those in seventh and eighth grade. And also I've competed in Math Madness with both the elementary and Duitt teams, where we got to the Elite Eight and Sweet Sixteen out of the sixty-four teams that competed that come, sorry, pardon me, that competed last year in the United States. And if you let students take Algebra One when they get to middle school, then we could be the, we could be the number one middle school team in the whole entire United States. And just imagine what could happen if you let students take Algebra One in elementary school. And if you think about it in terms of sports, Algebra One is like learning how to dribble in basketball. It's a necessary skill and it's involved in all of the aspects of the game. And I want to be an engineer when I grow up. So learning Algebra One is an essential backbone for my education and learning. And I want to advance my opportunities in math, just like any other kid in this school district. So I'm taking this time to take my shot and tell you why you should let all middle schoolers who want to take Algebra One be able to take it. Thank you. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have now.
Well, thank you. Well, um, well, first, we'll have board responses shortly. Are there anyone else?
Nobody else on this list.
No one online, correct? Okay, so perhaps, uh, we'll just go right to board responses for our, uh, public comment. Dr. Brown and others, uh, who can talk about Algebra One and, um, and I think frankly Neil's probably already ready for, uh, engineering level math now, but, uh, well, that's something for another day, but go ahead. Board responses. Administrative responses to the question.
It's good to see Neil. We've seen his father many times at our board meetings over the years. Uh, Ms. Talk, I'm going to invite you up to talk about with, without being identifiable, our approach to, uh, sixth graders taking algebra and, uh, the process for a young person wishing to transition to Algebra One. Prior to seventh or eighth grade.
That'd be great.
Yeah.
Good evening. Good to see everybody. Neil, great to see you. Thank you so much for sending, uh, the video of you playing the violin a few weeks ago. That was amazing. You're awesome. So good to see you. So we have an accelerated test that we offer to sixth graders when they enter at our middle schools. And so that provides an opportunity for young people to advance in mathematics. It's both content standards and practice standards, right? So we're not just talking about, hey, do you know the stuff of math, right? We want to know, how do you think about math and how do you communicate about mathematics, right? In order to accelerate. So that's offered to every sixth grader, uh, that wants to take it. And we're really trying to universally design opportunities for acceleration. And I will also say that our efforts to detract mathematics over the past few years have really been centered around providing a really solid foundation for all of our young people in mathematics for later math, uh, that's much more complex because some of the things that we had been seeing was essentially akin to, I would say, a Swiss cheese effect, right? So I might have really strong knowledge in some areas, but there might be some holes in some other places, right? So when I get to pre-calculus or calc, I may, I may struggle with some of those concepts. So we really want to give kids a really solid foundation. And also our efforts have really been around ensuring that we're supporting all students of all races, right? So we were noticing that our, our system was grouping kids who were black and brown in lower track classes systemically, right? And so we wanted to avoid that. So that's, that's a little bit of context in terms of how we're detracking. We're also continuing to provide opportunities for young people to accelerate as well, knowing, uh, Neil, we hear you. Thank you.
Excellent. Uh, any board responses?
Well, um, just following up on, on what Lily Calcutta was saying, um, you know, as a parent with a long involvement with the school district and with one child in particular, who, um, was very interested in the STEM side of learning. You know, I knew of a small group of students who were accelerated by two to three years in the math curriculum. Extremely brilliant mathematically, uh, that opportunity is there. I, I'm glad that the opportunity continues to be there. I will say that it, the opportunity to take Algebra One is there and, um, I don't think it's something that most of our sixth graders would, would do. And that's just because people are very, very different and we are a public school. We're, we're not a magnet school. We are a public school that is serving to the best of our ability, the, the needs of every single student of every talent and ability. And it's a, it's a balancing act. It is absolutely a balancing act. Uh, precocious mathematical ability is a wonderful quality, um, as is precocious musical ability and artistic ability and athletic ability and verbal ability. And, um, we are trying to bring that out for all students and thank you for coming and speaking to us.
Anyone else?
If I'm available, I'd like to speak real quick. Uh, Neil, thank you so much for that. That was very powerful. Um, and it's a conversation that's ongoing in the district and thank you, Dr. Brown and Ms. Talkit for talking more about it. To, uh, Jake and your third grade students and to, uh, to IPEI. That's a very powerful presentation, um, of the work that we're trying to do in the district. And I say this humbly and I hope Jake doesn't mind me saying this. It's reminding me of, uh, my age that I had Jake as a high school student at LACS. So our community should know that Jake is, uh, ICSD alum who returned back to teach. And I also had Jake as an Ithaca College student. And so to see the sort of work that's taking place with eight and nine-year-olds thinking so deeply about forms of systemic oppression is, is powerful. So, uh, thank you, everybody. And for Mr. Furman, thank you for the work that you do as well. Um, I've had a chance to see this in multiple different venues. And again, as a owner of Buffalo Street Books, please go buy the book, everybody.
Woody.
Hello, Neil. I just want to add my, um, my real pleasure at you, at us here, your voice. Finally, we've, um, heard from your dad a lot at the meetings and, uh, you know, he's tried to explain to us how emotionally mature you are and how capable you might be to, um, do the things that you think you can do. We still are obligated to listen to our teachers, though, to the adults in classroom situations. So we have to balance, um, uh, all of the, all of the, uh, energy and the, uh, and the hope and the gifts that parents have with, with what we're hearing from our adults. So rest assured, you heard from Lily, we take that responsibility very seriously, especially our executives. And if I'm not mistaken, there have been some measures so that children who possess, um, that combination, that rare combination of emotional IQ and intellectual IQ and math that can test, um, into some of the, uh, levels of which you were speaking. But again, I mainly wanted to say, you know, we, that's a decision that we made by our executive staff, including your building superintendent, I mean, your building, uh, principal and our superintendent. But I just wanted to say, I, I just, I'm, um, I'm so grateful and happy and smiling that you came to speak to us, uh, because it really is, it takes a lot. And your, um, your, uh, your presentation was very powerful. Thank you.
Anyone else? Very good. Thanks. Uh, thanks, everyone. And, uh, let's move on to student reps. If they're out there.
Yeah. Hi. Um, so in terms of school events, as we arrive at the last quarter of the school year, with a few weeks remaining, many clubs and student organizations are starting to reorient themselves for the end of the school year. Many of our academic clubs are doing very well these past few weeks. The mock trial made it through the semifinals and placed second in the regional championship this past Saturday. The math team placed tenth in Nismo, competing against, um, students from all around the state. The science Olympia team placed twenty-sixth in the state and was first placed in the Sound of Music event. The IHS Drama Club has started selling tickets for the musical, A Killer Party, which will be on, um, May seventh through May ninth. Uh, and I can put the link to that in the chat, the ticket sales. And also winter sports have finished with many of these sports already having held their senior nights. Uh, and with spring sports, many athletes have been waiting for their turn and are excited to get back on, out on the field, court, et cetera. Class officers are, um, also continue to provide events for fundraising or for bringing the class closer together. The seniors held a AAA fundraiser and the junior class is having a, uh, thrift store pop up.
Yeah. So recently we became aware that on May third, many students and teachers are returning to school. We are wondering, what was the idea behind this decision? Do we think it's going to improve grades? Just in terms of how will this change the rest of the school year? This school year without a doubt has probably been extremely, has been extremely trying for students, teachers, staff and admin alike. While in the beginning we were off into a rocky start, we are now nearing the end of this very challenging school year. Um, what we've learned on along the way as individuals and as, as a community is extraordinary, but we're not really done yet. I'm a senior at IHS and I'm going to be leaving soon, but what can my peers expect for the coming year? What do we know so far in terms of distance and in-person learning at school? And how will student and teacher input contribute to our final plan for the coming year?
Yeah. So we applaud the board again for their work with the academic calendar, but we still feel that there are holidays that are being excluded. Lunar New Year is one of the most important holidays in Asia and many, um, AAPI students in our district celebrate this holiday. Um, I think it's important to acknowledge this as many other holidays are, um, in the calendar as a day of cultural importance. I understand that our district is striving to be an inclusive community. So all of our AAPI students would be, uh, thankful if this was included in the academic calendar for next year. Um, we also understand that it is impossible to adapt to every holiday, but we feel that is important for these holidays to get recognized. As we were wondering if it would be possible for the, uh, board or administration to separate the holiday calendar, um, from the academic calendar to make space for all of the holidays that are significant to students. Um, this would acknowledge that, uh, existence of many days of cultural importance for all of our students and also help teachers like better adapt to their students' needs. If agreed upon, International Club is in the beginning stages of creating a comprehensive calendar of holidays that are important to our students and could be shared, uh, for districts. So on another topic of the town hall, um, there have been many ongoing student-led efforts at IHS to spread awareness and education about anti-Asian racism and hate. Uh, last week on Wednesday, Evelyn Kim, a senior, and I hosted a second town hall virtual meet that was open to every one of all ethnicities, including teachers and, uh, the IHS administration. I'm happy to report that many people were able to attend and we were able to have really good conversation between the teachers, students and administration, discussing ways our own district can help spread awareness and support for our API community. Education is honestly one of the most important things to be anti-racist. So I'm thankful that, uh, Ms. Talkot offered to share the resources and information we presented to other administrations in the district. I'm hoping that our presentation and recording of the town hall can be a resource or a tool for the district to aid awareness and education. So, um, I will put the link to our presentation in the chat. And I urge everyone, especially the administration and board members to take a look. And there are also like personal narratives from AAPI students who have experienced racism at IHS and in this district. And I think it would be really eye-opening for everyone to see this. And just in general, thank you to everyone in our district who is supporting at these anti-racist discussions and initiatives in our school this year. And again, please check out the presentation. It's, it would be really, really informative.
Anything else? Is Adam here? Okay. Well, thank you. Um, thanks, student reps. Thank, and thanks, Ithaca High and, uh, board responses.
I just have a, just a couple of follow-ups. One is the, um, the link that was in the chat. Since I don't really have access to the chat right now, if we could have that sent around, that would be really helpful. And I'd also like to hear a little bit more about the calendar. So if I understand what you're saying is you want to do two separate calendars or a calendar where we would overlay and, and who is working on it? It's like, it sounds like it's already in progress. So it's curious to learn a little bit more.
Yeah, just to clarify, um, because there, we would, I think it's important to acknowledge all of the holidays that our students, uh, celebrate that are like culturally significant to them. And because there are a lot, I think it would be, uh, better if we could separate the academic calendar with like the breaks and stuff from the holiday calendar. And, uh, to get all of the holidays, the, uh, the International Club at IHS is like beginning to compile all of these holidays and could be used for future use as the holiday calendar.
I think it's really exciting. I'm, I'm really happy to hear that you're doing it. And I think one thing that I do like is when the calendar was actually with the current one, which actually has the regular academic calendar with the holidays there. I think it enables us to actually see where there might be conflicts and it draws people's attention to it. So I just, as a thought, would it be possible to do something like in one calendar, but with links that would then take with active links? Since a lot of people look at it online anyway, that would then take people to those holidays for more information about them as, so that you could still have the kind of, um, the, you know, functionality of, of seeing the two calendars side by side. It's just a thought.
A good thought. Yeah. No, absolutely.
Yeah, I, I wanted to follow up on that as well to make sure that I was up, understanding what you were suggesting and, um, that something similar to that has been, um, going on at Cornell for over, over two decades. You know, they have their academic calendar, but then their Office of United Religious Works, I don't know if they still do because I haven't looked for it in years, but they, they would send out a list of, of major holidays of all religions, just so that people would be aware of the, uh, and respectful of the cultural diversity and understand, you know, what their students or colleagues or you know, what their students or colleagues or faculty might be, um, might be experiencing spiritually or religiously. I will say that that list always missed my Christmas and Easter, but I'm not bitter. But I think being as comprehensive as possible and, and, and acknowledging that there are too, too many days of religious importance to different people that for us to cancel classes for all of them and still meet our 180-day requirement. But I think, I think uh, popularizing and spreading knowledge and, and, um, and acknowledging and recognizing is a wonderful idea. And I'd like to see us do that.
Grace, I'd like to add that, um, on our current calendar, that is the very reason why some holidays are listed. They are, uh, graded, so it, it clearly does not indicate, um, the same level of importance from my perspective that I want to have. But we wanted to make sure that when people look at our academic calendar, that we are at the very least recognizing Ramadan, the festival of Eid, the lunar new year. Um, and so when you look at the calendar, it does include those things, but I think there's great power in, um, other ways in which we can communicate that information to our community. So looking forward to whatever the International Club puts forward and we'll do our best on this end as well. In regards to Emma's question, I'll leave that, uh, response to, uh, our administrators to talk about. What I can say as one board member is we know, uh, that we receive a significant number of emails from parents and caregivers and students trying to get back into the school in person. And so there's a lot to negotiate there. There's no question about it, but the number of emails that we receive, in some regards, begging, pleading, letting us know the significant importance of us opening up our school buildings to more students has been very difficult for us to negotiate when we have not been allowed to do so. And so I'll just, I'll leave the rest of the conversation for our central administration.
Uh, thanks, Sean. Uh, I did want to make sure that we touched on vision for, uh, next year, and I think we, we will get to that. Um, go ahead, E.
Grace, I'm not sure if you've heard us at the board meeting. Speak about this distinction between diversity and, uh, cultural competency and belonging, right? Which is what we really want you all to feel. And, you know, the evidence of this country's history shows that after various waves of immigrants have been accepted, like large air quotes, including by recognizing their holy days or their culturally significant days, that that group experiences less violence. Right? So there's, there's a real connection here that should not be missed. And it's not just at Ithaca. Including the lunar calendar is going to solve everything, but you all get my point. It's just that kind of recognition that signals to the, to the, uh, to those behaving badly, that they can no longer do that. Um, so I get the significance. Cornell, when I was an employee there, fundraising, one of the, um, highlights of the year was going down to New York and celebrating the lunar calendar with the Asian alumni, um, made them feel included. And they, uh, once they feel included, all kinds of wonderful things can happen. So I hear you, as Sean said, and Rob reiterates all the time. Dr. Brown knows there are lots of such events and, uh, you know, we're going to work as hard as we can to have them all recognized, to the extent we can. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I just want to say, you know, I heard her say things differently with the ask of going down and understanding how we can do recognition. And I think that's, that's our starting, starting point, our opportunity, where we, where we may not be able to have that as, you know, a day off from school. How do we recognize that? And how do we do that district-wide? And that's our greatest opportunity. Then that's what I'm taking away from, you know, we all acknowledge it. But where do we start the road to recognition? And you, you were dead on because, you know, that, that inclusion and recognition leads to all sorts of positive opportunities. And I just want to speak to that. Thank you.
Thanks, Chris. Uh, any other board members right now? Dr. Brown, I think, well, we're going to go roll into your reports and announcements and, uh, other good things. But if you want to speak to, well, it's your floor, Dr.
Thank you for the opportunity, Ms. Tansley. Uh, much of my thunder has been taken. Um, we've, it's already been mentioned that for the ninth year in a row, we've been recognized as one of the best school communities in the country for performing arts education. Thank you, Daphne Shululu and all the folks. And I found the performing arts program and all of our amazing students over the years who have contributed to that great recognition. It's also been recognized already that, you know, the New York State School Boss Association is recognizing us yet again by work around anti-marginalization curriculum development. And so I don't have many other awards to talk about, so I do want to transition into what we're thinking about it for the remainder of the school year and learning forward ICS, ICSD. So I'll invite Ms. Talkin, Ms. Caitlin, Brahm is here tonight, and we're going to just start talking about, uh, where we are currently right now. Um, at the last board meeting, I spoke about us wishing to get more young people back into our spaces and that is going well. And we're having more and more common, more and more conversations with our staff members who were working remotely up until now. And we're providing the accommodations and getting more of our staff members to come back into our spaces as well. With that, I'm going to transition over to Ms. Talkin and Caitlin to talk about some other thinking and some of the work that's happening for this year and next.
Wonderful. Thanks, Dr. Brown. Good evening, everyone. Good to see everyone again. Thanks so much for the chance to, to talk this evening and share some of our thinking and some of what's already happening in relationship to essentially our, our response and, uh, I would say much more around planning forward in relationship to, uh, the multiple pandemics that we're in the midst of, right? So, um, you know, earlier at curriculum, we had a really great conversation about this idea of learning loss. And a lot of folks have been asking us, um, you know, what, what are you going to do in response to the learning loss that we're, that we're hearing about, or this idea of COVID slide? And something that we've, we've said, um, and we, we want to really point out is this idea around language really can, really informs the way we both approach and act, right? And so if we are welcoming young people, knowing that they are bringing assets and actually they've learned a lot. It might not all be in the state standards, but they've learned a lot, right? If we're approaching next year in the fall, knowing that our young people are bringing wonderfulness, right? We can also then talk about the unfinished teaching and learning. That's a reality as well. Right? So we want to reframe this idea of learning loss or COVID slide in terms of what are our children bringing? That's fabulous, right? And that we're going to affirm in our spaces. And what are the realities around unfinished teaching and learning? So we have a brief presentation that we'd love to share with you this evening. Um, and we really start with a quote that, uh, is from Dr. Bettina Love, that I think frames much of this work. I have to give a big shout out to Mary Grover, the inclusion officer. She and I are leading this work together. She's doing an amazing job and she was actually the one who pulled this. So to love all children, we must struggle together to create the schools we were taught to believe impossible. Schools built on justice, love and anti-racism. And that is at the core of what we are trying to do in general in the Ithaca City School District and certainly as we emerge from the dual pandemic. Tricia, if you wouldn't mind going to the next one. Thank you. So the, the crux of learning forward ICSD is built on these four big tenants. And I'm so excited that Caitlin is here because she's actually going to talk about some of the ways in which Fall Creek is already doing this, right? To really give you an understanding of what, what we're talking about, to contextualize it further, right? So students as partners and leaders, and one of our partners and leaders is actually in the audience here this evening. Who's a student over there. Hi. Who's amazing and brilliant and is working with our learning forward ICSD steering committee in order to support this work and guide it, right? And when we're talking about students as partners and leaders, we're talking about not just in the school community, but also in terms of curriculum. Like what are we actually teaching and learning? And in what ways are kids involved in that process? And in what ways are we de-centering dominant narratives? Right? You saw Jake Chernikoff have a fabulous example of, of this, of this work and anti-racist curriculum for all, I would say, right? Or is really talking about de-centering dominant narratives. Right? So we want to systematize that, right? We don't want to just do that here and there. We actually want to do that as part of our process, right? Educator identity work, we know for each of us as an, as an educator, and when I say educator, I mean me too, right? It's all of us, right? Our identities connect to, um, our, our curriculum, our own experiences, et cetera, et cetera. So we're going to continue that work. Anti-racist curriculum for all, we're really talking about scaling up much of our anti-marginalization curriculum led by the fabulous Lisa Sahasr Bude and Mary Grover. And the structures of support, we're going to get into a little bit more detail about that. Tricia, if you wouldn't mind? Thank you. So there's a lot of text on this, but we'll make sure that it's posted as well. So those of you who are really visual, who need to come back to something and see, see the print, um, this should be, this should be helpful for you. And so, so I'll talk a little bit more about some of those structures of support because it's helpful to see that with the text. Um, and we're talking about mental health integration, right? So again, when folks talk about learning loss, right? That's, uh, that doesn't start with, we'd like to start with how are our kids and who are our kids, right? And, and again, welcome them as they are and support their emotional wellbeing. Frankly, that supports our emotional wellbeing too, right? Um, and so, you know, we use the ruler approach, et cetera, Mary's and the, and Jen and the fabulous psychologists, social workers and counselors who I cannot say enough good things about, have done a fabulous job of really trying to support all of us as we're, as we're supporting the people there. Um, and then specifically around professional learning, those are some of the big structures of support that we want to talk about. So, you know, we'll be doing, uh, we'll be putting out summer professional development. We're, we're starting to work with the Equity Consulting Group, right? In order to, to really support us on, on this journey. Um, and then the, the last part that I want to make really clear is summer programming. Eileen Granger and Julie Humble are principals for Project Innovation, which is a K8 project-based summer school program that we have expanded exponentially in order to support more young people and many more young people in person this summer. Right? So again, this will be on the website. We'll be talking a lot more about this in upcoming board meetings, curriculum, et cetera. But I wanted to make sure that folks at home had, had access to this print and could kind of get a sense of, of where we're going over the next, not just year, not just two years, but really the next three years as we emerge from this time. Tricia, if you wouldn't mind going to the next one. You're wonderful. Thank you. Um, oh, can you go back one? I'm sorry. So Caitlin is going to transition and talk about kind of these highlighted areas around students really being the partners, anti-racist curriculum for all, and some of the key structures of support to kind of give you a picture of what, what we're talking about. Um, and what we're talking about scaling up and really systematizing as we move forward.
Thank you so much, Lily.
Thank you.
Thank you for having me tonight. It's my honor to, um, have the opportunity to paint a picture and give some examples and, and contextualize what's happening at Fall Creek using this image of the bookends. So I'll be talking to you about our youngest learners and I'll be talking to you about our fifth graders.
Tricia, I think you can, thanks.
Thank you. On the left, you can see a photograph of our pre-K and kindergarten in their outdoor learning space. And I'm going to start with, with them, our, our very youngest learners. When we began thinking about outdoor learning spaces, you know, I've done a lot of, a lot of, uh, learning over the course of the year about how even though the history of American outdoor education is problematic and very much also rooted in white supremacy culture, it's easy in many ways to offer all children authentic time and nature for them to flourish. They simply come ready. It's part of their nature. It's part of who they are to run toward those outdoor learning spaces screaming in delight every single morning. Quite, quite honestly, the best part of my day to watch that happen. Um, as a small aside, I'd like to just say that part of this planning and part of what has made this possible is, um, and here's just a giant shout out to the Outdoor Gear Project for supplying us with whatever we said that we needed. And making sure that, that no one was, um, without what they needed to be part of this. Everyone belongs. So back to those kids. Four-year-olds and five-year-olds arrive to school as activists with complete agency, with brilliance, with curiosity. They are made to interact with everything and everyone around them. And it's their job to figure out how it all works, what to make of all of it, what to do with it all. And they come with this incredible energy. An energy that quite honestly, we as grownups, we do not have anymore. They are different than us in this respect. Here's something beautiful about teaching pre-K and kindergarten and other grades too, outdoors. The adults have permission, so to speak. It's simply ingrained in the day that there will be much less infringement on where and how young bodies are in space. Lining up crisscross applesauce. Hands to yourself. Inside voice. Thought. They're not fighting human nature. They're working with it and they're reveling in it. Children and grownups alike. What we're seeing is young people developing at incredible rates as social beings, as scientists, as artists, poets, writers, historians and makers of history. They are active, confident, joyful and loving. I'm going to talk about the other bookend of elementary school, the fifth grade. Our oldest students are engaged right now in a case study that is entitled Sugar, Slavery and Systemic Racism in Our Modern Food Systems. Soon you'll be able to read the whole thing and it's outstanding. On the right hand of the slide, you'll see just a piece of student work. It's difficult to read, but hopefully you can read it later. And the student is responding, um, to having read two primary source documents and a lot of conversation. It's a 12-week experience for children. And what it has taught us is that students need literacies that include identity, criticality, intellectualism and joy as well as skills. They need it. It's also taught us that they can absolutely handle hard subjects. And what I mean by handle is that they can hold space for others and they want to center marginalized voices. They are social justice activists. They come with a built-in desire to seek what is joyful and to work to expand it so that everyone can experience it. Some of the lessons that we've learned as educators, watching these young people do this learning is that doing our own identity work is imperative. These children need us to name how identities, our identities and theirs and those of others and throughout history, shape human thought and interaction, both in the past and in the present. They are in the moments of experiencing how their own identities are doing this. And they need us to be in it and in the moment with them. So all of that leads to a reframing of what our purpose is. We're no longer the knowers, but we are seekers of more inclusive ways of knowing right alongside our students. I want to end with my own thinking about what it takes to do this. It definitely takes reflection. It takes the work of our colleagues and doing and and thinking through and processing together. It takes immense courage. It takes deep listening. And by that, I mean a sent a quietude in each of us to allow what's around us to emerge. It takes a love of yourself and a love of others. And finally, I believe that it takes a glowing, hot, unwavering fierce commitment to kindness, which as Dr. Brown says, love doesn't mean a love fest and kindness, that kind of kindness, the ferocity of that kind of kindness doesn't mean being nice all the time. It means doing this hard work for the right reason. Thank you.
Thanks. Thanks, Lily. Um, questions from the board, Chris and Sean, others in the room?
Yeah. I'll say, I mean, it's so much to take in. Just both of you are talking about. I I always want to say one thing about the Outdoor Gear Project. I am so enthusiastic about that approach. And I feel like it's one of the things to come out of this pandemic that is really meaningful. And I, so I have one question I have about how come it's only pre-K and kindergarten? And how do you, uh, you know, broaden it to, you know, does it, you know, you know, how does it go to the older grades? You know, why does it stop there? And um, the other thing I would say about the other issues of bringing students back into the classroom and thinking about not about what they've lost, but you know, maybe you know, mixing missing pieces or whatever, you know, how to, how do, how do you do that? And are there any thoughts on not? You know, right now, we always have, you know, you have first grade, second grade, third grade, you know, today's very kind of almost arbitrary. Grading, is there any thought of mixing grades so that so that one could kind of slide up and down? Um, in in kind of less regimented ways. So just a couple of thoughts.
Is it okay if I start?
Yeah.
So I want to just address the first part first about, um, as you know, I believe that we all have much to learn from our youngest learners. Um, and and why I chose that approach of the bookends is because our pre-K kindergarteners, um, and there are some first graders actually in that cohort, in those two cohorts, um, but just a couple, um, have been outside all day, every day. So because that is such a remarkable thing and because it just became so natural for them, I wanted to highlight that. But I also will say that the other grades are also outside a lot. Um, so they look for those opportunities, um, when it makes sense to be in there. Everyone has a designated outdoor learning space. So they're free to go to it at any time. There's no scheduling conflicts, um, because there's enough to go around. Um, everyone has the cutoffs in the circle and, um, you know, it's it's theirs. So so although everyone, um, and I think this this goes for all of the elementary schools, is outside a great deal. It was really something to see these little tiny ones doing it in February. Every single day. It's been great.
And then Anne, your your other question about multi-age grades is actually something we're already doing. Uh, we've, you know, in some, in some regard, it's been a necessity of the pandemic. And uh, it's certainly something that some folks are looking to continue, right? And I think, you know, I'd, you know, one of the, one of the things that I think are American education is really founded on, unfortunately, that we're trying to actually uh, disrupt is is this idea of of fixed ability, right? And so, so what you're talking about is great in terms of kids moving from different places because we're not just talking about skills like Caitlin was saying and like we're talking about in Learning Forward ICSD, we're talking about identity, we're talking about criticality, intellectualism, joy. Right? So those aren't, those are, we're not just, we're not just saying, okay, you need to, you need to be over here in this homogeneous group in regard to skills all day, right? Because you missed or you lost learning, right? And and we, you know, so we're, we're trying not to sort and select in that way, right? And create something that's much more flexible and and allows allows all of us to be whole beings, right? To be here to to it almost, we're trying to create something that is much more humanizing than I think the standard response to the academic needs of the pandemic, right? Does that make sense?
Yeah, it does. I just want to say one other comment is one of the other things that I'm hearing is the kind of, is the, it's the word joy and that gives me joy. And and I, and I, I said that I think that um, the relationship between learning and play is like really, really important.
Absolutely.
And so I'm happy to hear it as prioritized because I think sometimes people get to school and it and and it kind of sucks the life out of that kind of natural investigation. And and so the the idea that you would be doing the kind of authentic experience where you kind of combine what your innate curiosity and harness innate curiosity, I think is just really valuable. So I really appreciate that.
And that direction. And Mary and Dr. Brown have been great about really holding space and and having us learn as an administrative team and many of our school communities around the work of Dr. Goldie Mohammed. Because those are her five pursuits in cultivating genius that that she's talking about, right? Identity, skills, intellect, criticality and joy. It's not in her original book, but now she, you know, she's always talking about now there are five pursuits. And those are really, those are just modeled after um, the Black Literary Societies of the 1800s. And so she went back and she did this research as part of her PhD and now she's created this this fabulous book, this fabulous approach that again, is much more about humanizing young people and adults in the educational system.
Woody.
Um, what I enjoyed most about this presentation is it focused on the responsibilities of the adult. If I'm hearing this right. What you're saying is, you know, um, maybe this is too crass or too simplistic, but this is what I'm taking away. It is the adult's responsibility to put teachers in a position where they can communicate with these children meaningfully regarding their identities and what they're seeing in society. Aligned with obviously a rigorous curriculum. And it is the adult responsibility to negotiate the policies so that we rewrite them in a way that advances its cause, allows nobody to hide. And it is the adult responsibility to accept the emotional challenge that comes when we free these kids to use that voice and choice to come at us as adults and you as principal and him as a superintendent. And we do that adult thing, right? We have a chance of making these kids more confident, joyful and prepared to be citizens that can handle the present, the past and what the future holds. So this is the framing I'm taking away from this. And you know, this is the way we all need to start talking. This is a, this is a C chain. Nobody here, nobody in the audience, nobody in the in the in the virtual audience should be confused about what's happening. We're saying something profound that how we assess our kids, it's not just going to be based on the past or the limited ways we have used to assess. Still, I'm not sure how we assess the things I just mentioned, but we'll know it when we see our kids showing up, right? Not just literally showing up and then showing up emotionally and um, and representing their best self. So thanks. This is a, this is really educational for me and um, you know, it 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 it, um, it's a sea change. We all should be prepared to advocate and fight for it.
I see.
So, yeah, I have a I'm going to say just, just kind of a pragmatic question. I I'm really intrigued by both parts of your your presentation today and the new approaches to learning and the fluidity of the grades. And uh, my mind was kind of flying off with that. And then what pulled it back down was a little something called like the New York State standards, which are which are grades based. And so if you could talk a little way about how, you know, the fluid classes and I, and I'm very much in favor of a more holistic assessment. But how how you're going to meld those so that, you know, we are going to have to be accountable to the state to show that proper amounts of learning are taking place. And I'd just like to hear your thoughts on that.
Yeah, absolutely. And and I'm sorry, Pat, I did, I um, I I likely was not clear enough. We're not talking about every grade, every school having multi-age classes and everybody's in multi-age classes. Um, I don't, you know, I don't want to give that impression that that is, that is totally our approach. So, um, there are a few things that we we know, we've done a, done a great deal of research on. And uh, in terms of, in terms of the asset-based academic approach or the skills and intellectual approach um, to to, um, you know, interruptions in potential formal education, that unfinished teaching and learning. So in response to Katrina, like we were talking about earlier in curriculum, we saw a, an an approach that looks a little bit more like spiraling or uh, what folks are now calling a just-in-time approach. So over the next um, few months and into the summer, we're spending and we're going to be putting a lot of uh, professional development and information out about this. But we're, we're working with Equity Consulting Group in order to help us create year-to-year learning maps that take a look at our grade level standards, right? Just want them, again, that's one aspect, right? That's just skills and some in intellect, right? Um, and take a look at them across three years as opposed to just saying, all right, we need to cram everything we nest into next year, catch everybody up in a year and just assume that it's all going to be fine. Because kids won't show up to ease point if if we just do that, right? So this idea of creating meaningful learning experiences, again, really focusing on anti-racist curriculum for all, right? That also infuses those skills as as we go through, right? And make sure that we're addressing those most important standards. There are also, you know, if you talk to, I, you know, I talk to teachers all the time, right? This is a, this is not about doing more. There's some stuff we're going to have to let go. There just is, you know, in terms of, you know, in terms of the the time and the depth in terms of some of our standards that we've, that we know that we need to take for young people in order to do do that, allow that learning to really blossom and to do those standards justice, we're not going to be able to get to every single last detail, right? So the idea of power standards, again, another well-researched approach is going to help guide us there as well.
And maybe I can offer a little bit of, you know, painting that picture for you since we have teachers who are doing this type of work right now. So we have several cohorts that are mixed and they're contiguous. So like in a second, third grade class, so this, uh, for example, they may be working on a case study where there are so many entry points, everyone is together, right? And then later in the day, they may be doing um, really targeted math work. And so they will separate into groups and that could be along grade lines or it could be, you know, based on the latest formative assessment, you know, it's still mixed, but there are smaller groups going on where they're getting exactly what they need. So um, in a way, it's not different from what we've always been doing in terms of that differentiation. There's more of it. It's a, it's more dis, it has more, a more disparate flavor this year, certainly. And the teachers have absolutely ridden, risen to that challenge in remarkable ways. Sort of quickly learning, you know, usually either the the stuff that came right before, what they're more used to, or the stuff that comes right after. And I have, I mean, I have even first-year teachers who are doing this with such incredible dedication and skill and attention to student experience that those kids are an absolute community and they recognize each other's assets and um, humanity in such a way that it doesn't matter the oldest to the youngest in that, in that cohort. They're just, they're just, they're, they're them. So, um, if we can do it this year, by gum, we're going to do a great job next year.
Shout out to our amazing teachers.
Yes.
Amazing teacher.
Yeah. Yeah. And and just, just along those lines, um, last week and three weeks ago, um, the board was able to participate in a review of, um, teachers who are untenured and get a kind of snapshot about of every untenured teacher in this district. And we really did read and hear about just amazingly creative and caring and and innovative techniques. That was real, really, really heartening. And I think something that you said, Lily, I don't know how many people are listening on this beautiful, you know, wonderful warm night, but like, we, we cannot rush back in the fall and just be in a blind panic of look how much everybody's missed, look how much everybody's missed. Like it, that's counterproductive, you know? Supporting kids in their strengths, recognizing that, yeah, they learned a lot. Everybody's learned a lot this year in their own ways and that putting performance stress on them is not going to help anybody. And and it hearkens back to a simpler time and perhaps a simpler community that I grew up in. That um, that academic performance through external measures is not the be all and end all of success at every minute of your life.
Other, uh, other questions? Anyone online or?
I just have one more.
Sure.
Just the other thing that the strategy of the return to the school and personal learning as next year will be quite different than what this year, that's an adjustment. And uh, just to echo a little bit what Paul's saying, I I feel like the rebuilding of community and with, especially with the community being all in one place, most likely. That really is so vital and 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 that that kids feel part of that place before any other. It just seems like that has to be established first, almost before anything else can can, you know, thrive. I don't know if, what your thoughts are on on kind of the social and emotional community building piece, but.
Yeah, and Anne, that's always been the case.
In some ways, this year, what we've seen is children taking on the the work of doing that for each other and in a very magnified way.
Agreed. Yeah, I was at Huga Heights today and in three of the classrooms that I stopped in, um, the kids themselves were rearranging tables. They were, they were um, creating supply boxes for their friends because they're welcoming new students tomorrow in some, in some of their classes. And um, I was talking with a teacher who said, you know, I used to just stay after and get everything ready and set everything up. But this year, we're really focusing on But this year, we're really focusing on empowering students. And, and it's just been, it's been a game changer. So instead, the community talked about the best way to welcome. They redesigned the classroom and they did it.
To, I'll just do a quick rejoiner, but I will point out that I was at Hugo Heights School today too. Well, Dr. Brown and I just checked in at Hugo Heights and Duett, taking up Carlin on her invitation, for those of you at their, at last Thursday. But do want to point out that certainly for board members, we have been reticent to go into buildings for all the reasons that we are aware of. But certainly, it is, it is okay to go check in and obviously go through the proper protocols. But, you know, we're all vaccinated, I believe. And, but check out, take the opportunity before, as we work into the end of the year, to go in and just see what's, see what's going on. And it's an opportunity, frankly, for us board members to check in with our liaison schools in person that we frankly have not been able to really do and check in and see what, see what those outdoor classrooms at Fall Creek and when it's raining. I'm not sure you're out there all day long in the rain, but it's, you know.
Well, bring your splashy suit.
But, but it's a, it's a great opportunity just to check in and, or frankly, see kids in the classroom, certainly at elementary level, and see some of the challenges at the middle school with our own eyes. And we talked about standards briefly. You know, I've, well, of course, you know, I grew up here as others did. You know, there were New York State Standards and all that. You know, that isn't our measure. We have ethica expectations and standards that, and if you're looking for solutions of how to educate during a pandemic, you're not, Albany does not have the answers. And if we're looking for Albany to say, well, this is how we reopen going into next fall, bringing as many kids back as possible, they don't know how to do that. So the work that you all are doing, the, this changing the way that we, as Dr. Brown says, do school or just evolving it a bit. I mean, so obviously been pretty successful in ethica, but now we, we need to do it. Yes, we need to do it differently, but we're going to do it, we're going to figure that out here. And there's not going to be any, any smart person in Albany telling us, okay, this is what you're going to do in your classroom, Caitlin. And, right? So this is for, for the students and for the great team that we have, or standing leaders. And, and we as a board get to go, go along for the ride. But, and certainly appreciate all the work to get us to this point, get us to the point where now we can launch and, and bring this, bring this thing together. And, and eventually, instead of sitting here, I'm going to be sitting out there watching a concert. All right? So that's the dynamic that I would like to see and that will happen. And we look forward to that soon. But Sean, did, I see him on the, want to weigh in at all, Sean?
I was not going to, but since you called on me, I will briefly, it's an opportunity. I'm never going to miss an opportunity. But Rob, that point that you just made about standards reminded me of last week or two weeks ago, excuse me, when we had Jason Reynolds in ethica, the noted author of the book Stamped, and I know a number of our secondary students are reading it. And he had a phenomenal line and this is no, this is a both and to what our young student Neil was telling us today. But Jason Reynolds said, I failed algebra, but give me $20 and I can show you how to survive for a week. You know, something about that notion that our young people are learning various skills that is not always captured by a standardized test. And so I look forward to the ways in which we grow, how we teach young folks about the ways in which we survive in this world and how to negotiate and much more importantly, to thrive. So Caitlin, thank you for your presentation today. It was heartwarming and I'm looking forward to the work we do ahead as a board, as a district, and as a community.
Thank you, Sean. Anyone else right here, right now? And this is a lovely way to end up the evening. We don't have to do a bunch of votes because we did that already. And so really a great highlight tonight, Caitlin and Lily for, for coming, coming in front of us tonight. But we're going to let everybody go, assuming Dr. Brown, there is nothing, no other items we need to address for the school district tonight.
Just a quick thank you and a shout out to the folks in the back who made this possible yet again. They've been, they do, they made a job. Thank you. Team, definitely appreciate y'all.
But in upcoming dates, it will be May soon and there will be elections soon. And we have a budget vote, May 11th, May 18th, sorry. And there will be a public, public hearing about the budget. But more importantly, we have three outstanding board members that are, I think, have consented to run again. Anne Reichland, Maria Lang, and Nicole LeFave, who are, I believe, going to stand up and continue this work, assuming the community wants us, wants you to do that. But once again, thank you for standing and voting and, and running again. And we look forward to the votes coming up. There may be, I'm sure, some public.
Yeah, there's going to be a forum sponsored by the Village of Ithaca on May 13th, correct? What? It's definitely May 13th and I forget the time, but I'm sure there, it will be a virtual forum. And I'm sure there will be more information forthcoming.
Excellent, Maria. And opportunity to plug the, the hearing. So there, I had a, I had a reason I was doing that. So Dr. Brown, you're good. I appreciated the opportunity to tour a little bit. We're going to do a bit more so I can make my way around the district a little bit. And I encourage others to do the same. Without anything else, without any further ado, Tricia, you're, if Trish is good and ready to go home, we're, we're going to call it, right, Tricia? So thank you, everyone. Thank you, New York State School Boards Association for your award tonight. And, and everyone else, have a great evening and we'll see you all soon.